It's 7:30 tomorrow. They've called the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. It's the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I have a motion approving the public hearing in village board minutes from the August 4th, 2022 meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Carry. Public comment. We have three public. Would you like to comment? Do you want to go ahead and go first?
Go ahead.
Oh, we'll be a few minutes.
That's okay.
Sally's talked to us the last couple of weeks.
She's a regular.
Hi. Mayor, board members, thank you for inviting us in. My name is Dan Coogan. I'm from Baldensville Little League. Andy Meskary, the president of Little League. And what we're doing tonight is first we'll give you a quick update on, you know, how we're doing as far as the league and the numbers and how the teams did this year. And then want to go through some of the projects because our process says that if we make any changes at the park, we're required to go through first our board approval and then second, we need to go through the parks committee, which is made up of Towne Lysander, Towne Van Buren, and Baldensville. And then once all of that is done, then I come to the village board and ask for approval because the village owns the park to do any projects at the park. So we have a couple of projects in mind for both this year and then going into next year. So I'll try to keep it quick. So just a quick review of the season. We had 652 kids sign up for baseball and softball this year, ranging in ages from T-ball all the way up to seniors level. So we had a great turnout. Performance wise, we had three teams. We had our 10U team, our 11U team had both gone to regionals for All-Stars. And then our 11U team went to the States for All-Stars. So we had great performance, you know, as far as our teams are concerned.
Can you stand closer to the mic?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Is that better?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, and then a couple of the things that happened is we named Field One this year, the Cecil E. Reeves Memorial Field. We had the village had come out and did oil and stone. It'd been quite a while. We had a lot of potholes and so it was really overdue to have the parking lot redone. One of the issues we still have is there's no lines on the parking lot. And it's a free-for-all. Once everybody comes in and starts parking, they get really creative in how to park in that area. So we would be asking for the village to help out with getting the parking lot lined at some point, probably after fall ball or maybe in the spring. Our fall ball season will be starting the week after Labor Day. We've also had a real good turnout for fall ball as well. We're one of the largest Little League programs in the state and we're certainly the largest in the area. You know, we may be biased, but we have the nicest fields and the nicest park in the area. The Little League this year spent about 8,500 on Washington ball mix. So we redid a couple of the fields. So, you know, we are using some of our operating capital to keep the park in good shape.
Which has not been done since sometime. I'd been on the board for five years and since I've been on the board, we have plenty dirt on there. We actually had the guy from MBTV Stadium came out a couple of years ago and told us we were two inches low on our big field, which is our major league style diamond. So that's over 80 tons of dirt that we brought in from Canada where it comes from. So it was quite an undertaking to get these fields back up in order. They've been kind of neglected for a while, but it was one of the priorities this year. So they look great, absolutely fantastic.
So a couple of the things that we wanted to cover is we've had a couple of security issues at the field. We've talked with the mayor already and Chuck. We have seemed to have some activity off hours in the park. We're not able to be there, of course, but we had our new cart that we purchased at the end of last season that was stolen sometime over the winter. It was hooked up with a chain and somebody came and cut the chain and took it away. We had a homeless person living in the woods in between, you know, our parking lot and the Tops parking lot. And so we did need, you know, we did call and ask the police to come through and, you know, just check and ask them to leave because we have, you know, with the number of kids that we have at any one time and the lot, we don't know who he is or what he's doing there. But he did take up residence there. We have people stealing our recyclable bottles on the weekends. So we have, like I said, we have a lot of activity. We did delete purchase some security cameras and we did place security cameras around the park now. So moving on to the projects. We already have a couple of projects in process. We added a new scoreboard for our fields three and four last year. And we have a project now where we're looking for sponsors to do the big field and the softball field. And those are the four major fields. So we're looking to upgrade all of our scoreboards. They are original to the park, so they're 27 or 28 years old. In that, we're not asking for any assistance. We're working with our sponsors and we're offering them permanent sponsorship with the life of the scoreboard. So we will put up a sign with the scoreboard that says that it was donated by them. We're looking at our heat pump unit on the concession stand in the upper area. And again, that's owned by the Little League or maintained by the Little League. That's failed and so we're looking at replacing that. But that again is something that we would look to do. And then we're looking to purchase a three-wheeled groomer for the fields. We, you know, we borrowed one this year. It was very effective for us, so we're looking at and figuring out how we can do that. And then new projects. So this is what we're here to ask about tonight. We'd like to add first a bullpen to the right field of the large field, our Field One. We have a lot of kids that are running. Field One is one of the fields in the open area. In the right field area, there's a lot of people walking through there. There's kids playing in there. And so for the pitchers to warm up, they don't have another place other than to go to left field. So they've started throwing in that area. We stop them as soon as, you know, as soon as we see it, but it's still, it's a hazard. So we'd like to suggest that. And I've given the mayor a copy of this presentation, so I apologize. My printer decided that it didn't want to have any ink, so I had to change the ink. And I was literally printing this at 10 after. So if, Mayor, you could forward this to, you know, the board members. Because there's a lot here that I'm running through. Another batting cage in front of field four. So we have a batting cage that has a unit that has two batting cages in it currently. We'd like another one that is often quite occupied with the number of teams that we have. In the summer, it gets jammed up between the field availability and the batting cages. And we don't have enough to accommodate all of our teams. The adding a metal or pavilion roof over the existing batting cage. It's nice to have, but certainly it gives us the ability to hit, you know, while it's raining, while it's snowing, you know, we can get more time in for the kids to bat. Maybe more of the three, three of the four seasons. The next project is to extend the fence on our Field Three. So our fences right now are set at 185. To host a state tournament, we have to get to 200 feet. And so we are physically close on space. We could probably extend another 10 feet, but then we have to go up to eight foot high, the fences to get the equivalent of 200. So we have, this is the same project that we already did that was approved by the board. Probably six years ago, I was here to ask for that on our Field Four. And that project has been done. So it would be very similar to that, pushing the fences back and raising them up to eight feet. So we would be asking for that for both our Field Two and Field Three. If we can get three fields that are at that distance, then we would be able to host a state tournament, bring a lot more revenue into the league and to the local businesses because it brings teams in from all over the area.
That would be Little League affiliated stuff. It would also open us up to being able to host larger tournaments. There's a ton of travel teams in the area, so we can be a host site. And obviously, the Little League would be charging to have these teams come in and run big tournaments. These people are going to stay in our hotels, are going to come down, they're going to use our businesses, eat in our restaurants. So it would open us up to that also because you really, with only two fields, it's really hard to run a tournament and the one big field. So if we can get all three moving, we can open that up to some other tournaments. And it would be additional revenue for the Little League to look at some of the bigger projects that we've been wanting to do.
Then the next project would be to add another T-ball field. So we do own an area, the park has another area outside of the main field, the 90-foot diamond. Outside of that fence, there is another area that would be big enough to have a T-ball field. We have some challenges with the, our Fields Five, Six, and Seven. Those are the ones that are on the church property. So we're not able to use the church property fields on Wednesday nights or Sundays when church is in session. So we end up usually having to move a bunch of games around to be able to accommodate. Our largest volume of players are really at that level at the T-ball and coach pitch level. That's where we have 10, 11, and 12 teams. And so it becomes a challenge to manage that. So if we can add another field, we would be able to, you know, to take care of the logjam of games that we have. And next, we have a safety issue on the big field. We have pressure-treated lumber floors. The frame underneath those have rotted just over the years. It's been the original for 27 years, so we're asking to change that over to concrete. And then that, you know, that will help us. Right now, they are sinking, they're splitting, they're, you know, they're really, that's also the field that the kids are able to wear metal spikes, so they're digging into it. And that's why the pressure treated is rotting. And then last.
Won't they slip on the concrete though?
I'm sorry?
Won't they slip on concrete?
No, we put a rubber pad over the top of the concrete.
To protect it also because the metal spikes will dig into the concrete.
Just having that permanent structure underneath with the weather while it's on.
And then last, we were proposing a wall of fame. And where we would need the village approval is the backside of the garage. Is where we would propose to put it to recognize all of the previous teams and the, you know, people that have contributed to the league over the years. And so it would be some kind of a wooden rail system that we would slide in plaques and be able to recognize some of the teams from the past. The one other thing that I'll mention is we've already had a donation from Lowe's for paint to be able to paint all the buildings. They haven't been painted in, you know, in the time that I've been involved. And I started when my son was five and he's 22 now. So 17 years, I know they haven't been painted. So I would, you know, we would propose that, you know, we can go ahead and paint that. We will provide the labor. We've already got the paint, so. But we only take care of the concession building. We'd need approval for the, to paint the garage as well. So a lot of stuff there. Thank you for your attention. Mayor, if you could forward this to everybody so that they are able to look at all of the items in detail. And then we'd ask for a vote for the projects. Any questions on any of it?
Go for the graduate.
What we basically have is pay for their projects.
Yes, we will be paying for all of these projects between sponsorships, registration money, and through, you know, this other money that we're able to raise.
Just need an okay if you must say.
Yes. Yeah, to make any changes. You know, some of these are permanent, you know, adding concrete to the floors of the dugout. So that's required in our agreement is to, you know, to get.
Do we need a resolution to support their proposal?
Yes.
Well, are you looking for a resolution now then? Are you just hoping we can vote on now?
It's a resolution to support what they're finding.
I'll make the resolution to support the plan.
I'm sorry. We just suggest that, as always, it's nice that we have the materials to look at and review before we vote. But this is kind of an exceptional situation. That's just my comment. Spent enough time up there, I know everything you're talking about. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Paint away. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
These are 692. How are all the kids from the Baldensville School District, is that a restriction or are you?
Yes, so it's any, any school in Baldensville School District. And that includes St. Mary's. And so we can have players that, you know, we had a player from Lakeland. We had a player from Syracuse City because they attended school in Baldensville.
The old Little League district used to be, and it still is currently, Radisson was part of Seneca River North. So they all played, your Jason Grilleys, all those guys played Seneca River North. Then about my kids actually started at Seneca River North because I live in Kimbrook. But we are in the Baldensville School District. So we started at Seneca River North, played there for a couple of years. And as my older boy was in Coach Pitch, I started noticing coaching that the kids were talking to each other and they'd be like anytime, and my kids didn't really know anybody except for the few years that they've been there for baseball. And so we started talking and actually changed the rule that if you attended a Baldensville school, you could play in the Baldensville Little League. And that's when I made the decision to come over here because I wanted my kids to be able to be with the kids that they're going to school with and stuff like that. So there hasn't been any moving of the lines from Little League International. That was the only change was the school change to be able to bring them over and play with the kids that they go to school with.
Last question. I put the Little League World Series on last night for a little while while I was doing something. And these 12-year-olds are 5'9" and 5'11". Do we have kids like that in Baldensville?
We do.
12-year-olds.
I do. Now, my 12-year-old that played on the 12-year international team this year, he's six foot. My 15-year-old's 6'3", so, but he plays for the school now and stuff. So, yep, we have, we have some, we have some big kids.
It's weird, like in the World Series, you got those kids and you got the fabulous Bears kids right next to them.
Everywhere we travel, they go, man, there's got to be something in the water on the beach. It's going to be bigger than everybody else. Yeah, and just to, I mean, just to kind of for discussion on that, we are, Dan didn't really mention it, but we are the largest youth organization in Baldensville. We're bigger than Pop Warner, we're bigger than Lacrosse, we're bigger than all that. So we have, you know, kids that are living in Radisson Village, Van Buren. So it's just very nice to have your support to be able to make the park better. We have some high aspirations. The lights are the old Nai, they're the old Nai Kaed, they call them. We have to flip one on every five minutes, otherwise our power will go if you shoot it through the roof. So we've had estimates of trying to get them over to LED. It's like $120,000. So we're trying to do what we can to keep the park nice and we appreciate your guys' support.
Terrific. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Just checking. Moving on to trustees' comments. We'll roll over to. Just stick with the agenda tonight.
Agenda.
Trustee's agenda for me.
Agenda.
Agenda.
One thing, just keeping with the sports team. Carly Desmon, a member of the women's varsity lacrosse team, has just been selected to the USA Under-18 Select Women's Lacrosse Team, which I think is pretty cool. She's a national, you know, she's going to be going all over and playing for the, playing for the country. So I think that's awesome. And after that, stick with the agenda, Mayor.
Mayor's comments.
Here we got a couple. We've got to remember when we start here. The mural, the four corners, the historic mural that was painted on several years ago by Eagle Scout.
I'm sorry.
It's a Girl Scout.
A Girl Scout for her gold award.
I'm sorry. I thought she was being, that was for Eagle Scout or whatever comparable.
Yeah. It's called a gold award?
It was a project and they feel it needs to be washed. And looking for some volunteers to take a couple of hours to go down there and wash it off and brighten it up. And if anybody knows anything and would like to help, get ahold of me. And I'll hook you up with Michelle Across, the mother who painted it. And she will lead a crew to get that done. We had a meeting with the school district the other day. Was Lieutenant Lockwood and John Tenello from the planning board. I met with three of their representatives, their traffic, their, the head of their traffic and all that stuff, the bus garage and so on, their assistant superintendent. And then Kim Viles, who was a, she kind of led the whole thing. And I did not realize the number of people who have switched to bringing their kids to school rather than having them ride the bus. And apparently, it's caused huge, huge backups on school day mornings. And some in the afternoon, but not so bad. But I mentioned it to Chuck one day and he said, oh, yeah, there's, I've seen them backed up to the railroad tracks on Naita Street waiting to get into school to drop their kids off. So they're looking for some alternative ways. Now, the suggestion, they had a traffic study done. And the recommendation that was made, which was a little weak, I think Lieutenant Lockwood would agree, would be the entrance on Oswego Street that used to be open when I was going to my school. It used to be one of the main entrances. They would open that up and then use the smoker's path as an exit. And Lieutenant Lockwood said right away, well, now you're talking about instead of blocking up the Naita Street, now you're blocking up the main street in Route 48. And it would probably block up in both directions. And it didn't sound like that would be very acceptable. Also, coming out on Naita Street that close to a traffic light presents problems. They're fishing in the dark and they have no idea of any real way to take care of the problems. Now, Mike Lockwood suggested that they take Palmer Lane entrance and put like widen it. You know, they might have to spend some money, widen it into three lanes. One lane for buses, one lane for like dirty and one lane for the high school. So people could not have to sit behind buses or buses wouldn't have to sit behind cars waiting. They could split into the lanes that they belong in. Unfortunately, that problem, if you notice, there's signs up to tell you if you're, to go to the Palmer Lane entrance to drop off kids, I think. And people ignored that. And they went in the main entrance, which now they're facing everybody coming out. And it caused all kinds of problems. So some of the problem is the people don't listen and don't read signs. So we met and talked for about an hour and a half. And they understand it's not something that's going to be fixed before the first day of school. That it's probably going to be a while before anything is concrete. But I'm throwing it out for you folks and for anybody who has got ideas. They're aware that kids use Episcopal church to park. They're talking about possibly having that be a drop-off.
It is a drop-off.
It is.
But not, not a sign by the school.
Well, if they extend more people there, it'll just, it's already backed up where people are backed up on Oswego Street.
So I mean, as you can see, there's no easy answer. Everywhere you put them, they're going to block traffic up. So they're fishing. So if anybody has any thoughts, please send me an email and I'll forward it to the school. I'm sure Lieutenant Lockwood has talked with the chief and, you know. We didn't stop anything. We did a lot of talking. They also, I also brought up the subject of school buses on Philip Street. I said, in discussion, it was brought up that the agreement when they built a new bus garage was no school buses on Philip Street. And Joe Barbary said, it was never discussed, never happened, is not, there's no such rule. It just wouldn't work. We've got people, we've got kids that go to school from that area that we have to pick up. There's no way we could exclude all school buses. And nobody even thought of it. So we're sort of at a standstill. We may meet again if they come up with new ideas. There's really not a whole lot, you know, there's just, you can't just clear out an area and say, okay, this is going to be an entrance to the school. So we'll see what happens. I got a letter from, a co-signed letter from Van Buren and Lysander supervisors that they are washing their hands of the summer, pre-summer concert series on the island. There was only four events this summer. And I guess they just decided it was too much of a headache for them and they were not interested. And so I'm going to throw it out for, you know, organizations, civic organizations that might think that's a nice way to get their message out to the community by hosting that. We'll look at and see if our promoter has any interest in being involved in it. It's something I hate to see go by the wayside. That remains to be seen. We did have a request a few weeks ago from people on River Street concerned about the traffic, the speed of traffic, the people going the wrong way on one-way street, that type of stuff. And I know that the chief has checked out signage and we need to improve that. They requested we go with a speed limit of 15. Unfortunately, we can't do that by state law. The state just passed an ordinance that allows us, anybody in the state to lower their speed limit to within a village or a city to 25. So we can at least look into doing that. We would have to pass a local law to reduce the speed on River Street to 15 mile, or 25 miles an hour. Bob's going to work on getting some paperwork in order that we would be able to act on if we think that's the way to go. And I would ask if, when the chief may have comments on that later. See if there's anything else. And I think that's about it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question or follow-up, I guess, about the speed limit. Thinking about villages like Liverpool, I know in areas around schools, they have a reduced speed limit. Is that something that is an opportunity? Because it's in a school district or?
Kind of a loophole.
What street you referring to?
Well, I know 370 going through the village of Liverpool.
But there's a, there's a school on that street.
Right, yeah. No, I'm just saying in, in general is that, I'm not talking about like River Street or anything, but I'm just saying, is that, is that an exception to the rule that we're not allowed to lower?
Yeah, yeah, schools, yeah, school zones you can lower.
And there's a limitation in the law as to the, as to the amount of road or amount of streets from the school to the beginning of the school. So you can't like take the whole street.
Right.
And reduce it. There's a specific limitations, but you can do that.
I don't know that we have. I don't know that we have any issues around any of our schools.
Yeah, I, I think, if I remember correctly, Van Buren over on Ford Street might be a lower speed limit over there. Generally, because of the traffic, because of the traffic situation on O'Naita Street in the morning for the drop-offs, there's no traffic going 2 miles an hour, let alone over the 30 mile an hour speed limit. Nobody's moving at all. And, you know, it kind of harkens back to some of the comments I made a couple weeks ago to our residents that came in. We've got a village that's, you know, was enacted and the streets laid out back in the 1800s. And, you know, I look at the street trustee Seaco lives on, at Virginia Street, and the traffic going there, it's not a wide street, it's a narrow street, 50-foot lots. Things close to the road there, there's no way to expand that street, you know, east and west to make it wider at all. You know, and you look at O'Regis Street, again, a narrow street, there's, there's no, there's, there's no, you know, area there for even cars to get around. It's just literally cars going either east or west, and that's it. So, you know, we've, we've got this situation where there's increasing development, more people, and now because of COVID-19, more people bringing their, their children to school is really creating some, some, some addicts. And to the mayor's comments, I certainly did have extensive conversations with Lieutenant Lockwood both before and after the meeting, because we did have some idea what it was about. And, you know, I'm not sure there's a, there's a firm solution out there right at the moment without some extensive modifications to some of the entry and exit routes onto that campus. And no matter what happens, someone's not gonna be happy.
Do this stagger times at all for the, at least the pickup? I mean, I know, at least at a study hall sometimes it is the last period. And if there's something like that where a kid could, you know, come and be picked up at that time, we could, you know.
The problem is, the other problem is they're having a severe bus rider shortage.
Yes.
So there's only, you know, they have to make the route, and the Durkey and Baker kids get picked up on the same bus, I believe. And, you know, that, that schedule is, is set up so that way they can drop off at Durkey and then drop off at Baker and do the same thing in the afternoon. The buses go and pick up from Durkey and then go to Baker and pick up, and then they deliver them back to their homes.
Well, that's a sign that, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a sign that buses are the problem, though, as much as the new car traffic that's coming in.
Oh, yeah, well.
If they can stagger that, and I was, a parent was going to pick up my kid every day, well, they no longer have, whatever, eighth period or something, however they set up their periods there for classes, and they can get out earlier. Just a possibility, leaving some of the traffic.
Yeah, and I, I know vehicles are not allowed on, in that area, certainly in front of Baker and Durkey, once the buses start to line up.
Yeah.
So that, I don't know how that would impact, I don't know exactly what those schedules are, but there's a lot of moving pieces, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah, not easy.
No, I agree, I agree.
You're done, Mr. Mayor?
I'm done.
Okay, moving on to department heads.
The chief's in court, thank you.
Okay. Our attorney.
I just would remind the board that the governor signed Executive Order 11.9 recently, which extends the emergency, the COVID emergency, due, due to the recent, the most recent situation to September 12th. So it's all been moved forward. So I will, other than that, I will stick with the agenda.
Village clerk?
I will stick to the agenda.
Mr. Treasurer.
I, I wanna just take two seconds and kind of clarify that my, my feedback about the village sewers being an asset. Cause, I mean, that's, that's like a small comment, opinion, piece of the whole picture in a vacuum, I guess. But I wanna be sure that, I, I feel like the village board's in a spot where you either have to say, we're gonna think about this based on, are we making money on it or not? And does the county want it or not? And is there something, as Chuck has, has said a few times, is there something, could there be a, a failure or something that could happen that could cost us a lot of money? And then make, you know, a factual decision based on it, on that information altogether? Cause my feedback about it being an asset is just based on the fact that we make a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. Chuck could have a looming thing that he thinks is gonna happen that could cost way more than that. I'm not saying I know anything like that, but that could negate that. But as an, as an asset in the village that brings revenue in, that's where I stand. And so I think you either gotta make that complete appraisal of the situation, or just say, we're not gonna worry about it right now. And then that's a decision that doesn't, doesn't matter if it's an asset or not. You're just not gonna worry about it right now. But I kind of, I don't want you to be misled by me saying, hey, we make money on it. You know, cause that's only one piece of it.
Well, what's created the time problem was this deadline of, are we gonna move sewer money to an infrastructure account?
Right.
Or whatever. I mean, once we pass that deadline, that deadline no longer exists. Hopefully, the state folks aren't upset and creating a law for us.
And Bruce, my comment to, with Mark was, I was just concerned that the money that we have in the accounts now is protected. So if we do have it, you know, we're in great shape. If we do have it, we're just trying to protect the money that's there.
And I would like to throw to the mayor, and this doesn't have to, doesn't mean anything, but I think along what Mark was saying, as a board, we need to make a decision to do nothing or to do something, but not just sit here forever in limbo. We need to make a decision. At my mind.
And, and the conversation I've had with, with the mayor and with a couple of you offhand has been, there probably is someone out there who knows sewer systems, what they cost, what can go wrong with them based on the age, and has statistical data on what, what could happen and the probabilities and that. And we could probably hire somebody who would say, review our data, say, this is what we make, this is what we can expect to make, this is what we can expect the repairs to be over the next 10 years based on statistical history. And here's a due diligence package for you with a couple of options. And one of them is, we're willing to take the risk, and the risk could cost us a million dollars, but we can afford that. And it's worth the revenue that we're gonna make. Or we don't wanna take the risk, and this is a good time to get out. And here's what the asset is worth when we start talking to the county. And then you've got this due diligence package where five years from now, and I always use the example of the Word of Life Church, when it was Elizabeth Street School, and it got handed off to them for what everybody has been saying for years was like free, basically. And so this would be a package of data from which you make a qualified decision on what we do. And, and it would probably support your decision.
And it's been three years since the county made a presentation to us.
Yeah.
Things have got to have changed with them. Be nice for them to come back.
And like I, I said, I think, two weeks ago about the meeting with the county. The county has a lot of money right now. A, a lot of money. They have a fund balance that they're being encouraged to reduce because they exceed what is, should be a normal fund balance. And so the other side of the coin is, if you're gonna go to the well and say, hey, you want our sewers? They're in a position, maybe, to, to pay us for them.
They are, they will pay, 200,000.
Yeah, that.
That's their, that's their thing, cause.
Final offer.
The problem is that most of the sewer systems in the county lose money.
Right.
Several of them are hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. Well, the 200,000 isn't even gonna help them hardly, because, now Liverpool is not turning their sewers over. Liverpool's kind of in the same situation we are. Their sewers, they've taken good care of them. They're not happy with what they hear about service to, you know, repair. You know, if somebody in my neighborhood says they're having a problem with their, with a leak, a sewer problem, I tell them to call DPW. Somebody's there in an hour and a half, and, and they, they know what the problem is. The county, sometimes it's, it's a day. Well, that could be a big, long day if your sewer's not working and your toilets aren't working. You know, your cellar's getting full of something you don't want in your cellar. So I had sent a letter to the county and said, at this point, we're not ready to turn it over. We're not, it was partly because of COVID, but partly because we weren't sure it was better for us. And I never got one word of response from them. They acknowledged, somebody acknowledged when I called, yes, we got your email. It was a letter in an email. And nobody ever responded. So didn't sense that they were pushing hard to want us. Maybe that was a bad interpretation, but I had not heard a word in all this time about, when, when are you gonna do it? Or are you still gonna do it? Or what's your situation? So it is something we need to take a quick look at because of that, the ability to move the money to another account only comes with us giving up the sewer. And it only come, happened, has to happen in like, kind of, the week. Where our time is running out. This point, I, I thought, I had mentioned before some things. I mentioned your comments, Mark, but some, some of the stuff I just mentioned, uh, being fairly comfortable with where we are right now. And I, I really didn't get much kickback, so I assumed everybody just kind of was in agreement or seriously didn't have a serious argument at least. So maybe I misinterpreted, I don't know.
No, I don't, I don't, yeah. I don't think you misinterpreted what I said. I just didn't want that to be in a vacuum, that it was the only consideration.
Right, I understand. And I, I would like to, maybe I have to make some phone calls tomorrow and find out if we could get an, like, an extension on the time to turn over, give it to your account. Give us some more time. It would be nice to know that we had a little bit more time. Another year, maybe to look at what we wanna do. Maybe the county at some point is gonna say, you got a week to turn over your sewers or else. I have not heard from them, from anybody, so.
And I don't know if this is a question Bob could answer. Could we possibly, if we wanted to establish this infrastructure account, transfer sewer funds that we know is contingent upon going to the county? And then if we decide not to go to the county, be able to transfer them back to their original account? So we don't miss the state's deadline? That's all I'm trying to figure out, some way to play a shell game.
Yeah, I mean, the contingency is in the state, the state legislation, so I don't think you can move it over unless there's been an agreement with the county.
Okay. Very good.
Let me make some, make some contacts tomorrow. I'll talk with Bob. I'll talk to our two, it was Matt, probably a man, and it didn't work on getting us the ability to transfer the money. Cause I'm sure, still not sure what would happen if, say, tomorrow, we turned over the sewer. We signed the lease, and it's, it's your sewer. Now we have this money sitting in our accounts. We can never touch that money? I mean, and.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where we stand with that.
Well, it's restricted by law, but you'd have to go back to the, to the state legislature and have them retroactively extend the time period.
And Dick, I would suggest if the county, when, doesn't reply to you, that you try contacting the county executive's office. They'll respond to him.
Okay.
I have a question, I have a question, it may be dumb question, I have no idea. Can we insure our sewer? For something catastrophic, like if we had a, even if it was a $200,000 deductible, but if it was a $500,000 fix, is there any kind of insurance that you could get that would insulate us from a major catastrophe?
I, I don't know, I've never heard of any, but the, they say there's insurance for everything, so.
Yeah, Lloyds of London will do it.
Well, that's why we have, that's why we have the reserve account, and we have a surplus account, that's our insurance.
Right, but I'm saying, I'm saying in order to maintain a reasonable amount in those accounts, that doesn't, isn't gonna be $2 million or whatever, somebody's gonna have a problem with you keeping them in those accounts. If it was simply enough to cover the deductible of a major repair, then you could realistically maintain a quarter million dollars in that account?
Interesting.
I mean, it's a thought, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a thought. We're thinking about. Yeah, here it is.
That's all for me.
Nobody's saying anything.
They're looking for a volunteer to go over to London and talk some words.
I'll go with the insurance, thanks, I'll, I'll mention that source.
Ruth, we'll move on to the senior center.
Just wanna let folks know, that, oh, sorry. We just wanna let folks know that we do have COVID test kits at the center, so if you should need one for whatever reason, seniors, give us a call or stop by, and we'll make sure you get one. Also, a couple things coming up that are fun events, but also support our center through fundraising. And one is a golf tournament, which is September 12th. That's a Monday. Public's welcome, everyone's welcome. Give us a call or check the village website for more information. Also, our Walk for the Woods is happening on September 17th. That's a Saturday. That is rain or shine. Can't believe I'm saying that. But if you wanna join us for that, everyone's welcome as well. And I wanna say, we've had great sponsorship for, for all the events we've been doing. And just wanna take a quick minute to acknowledge and thank the folks who came out for our car show, which started out as a beautiful evening in Baldenville, and then the skies opened up. So for those of you that literally weathered the storm with us, thank you. I hope you and your vehicles are dried out by now, and we hope to see you next year for a night with no rain. That's it. Thank you.
Superintendent Public Works.
It's been a busy summer so far. I, I see, I think you've seen, our crew's out in the roads quite a bit, getting ready for paving. We had a lot of catch spaces, the highway had a lot of catch spaces, repair the water, had quite a few manholes to adjust for the paving. In doing that, they did, they made some repairs over on Curtis. Burke's Place, they repaired a water valve over there. When they did that, it broke another one on Curtis. They got back and fixed that. They had a water leak on Downer. They have it over in Sunset. Fixed that one. It's been a, it's been, it's been a bit busy summer. Paving got pushed back, the paving was supposed to start this week, it got pushed back to next Thursday. Next Thursday, the grinding's gonna start, weather depending. The problem, the problem is as you usually held hostage the paver and the rains, they get pushed back. So they're gonna try, the, the schedule now is Thursday, Thursday and Friday for grinding, and then next Monday and Tuesday with the paving. They hope that it'll be done in three days for that. Our Warner Ave project's gonna start Tuesday. This is a project we've been trying to do for many, many years, and with the, with the money, we're able to get in there. We're gonna clean the creek there from O'Naita Street to Elizabeth. We're gonna take out that bridge of Warner, put a new bridge in. We're gonna close Warner Ave for the day. I'm notification, excuse me, for the entire project. All the notifications that have been made. The, the people on, on the Albert Palmer side will be able to get in and out, there's nobody on the other side. So they're gonna, they're gonna stage out our equipment there. Pretty excited to be able to get that done. It's just something we've never been able to get in there and do. Really hoping, that, that area's flooded a lot, and a lot of, there's just huge trees in there, sediment. We haven't been able to get in there in 40 years. And don't have the equipment to get down in there. So we're pretty excited that's gonna be started. Hopefully within three or four weeks, we'll be out of there. Detention ponds, we also, with the ARPA money, got up to Smokey Hollow Road. That was a pond back there that we had trouble for a very long time with the cattails. It's really, it's really landlocked houses. We have right of ways to get in and out. But the cattails were 10 to 15 foot high in there. We, we got them out of there, got some new ditches put in there, fill them with stone. We just hydro seeded it this week and we just hydro seeded it this week. That project turned out very well. Caster Bridge, there's also a detention pond back there. We haven't been in it for a very long time. And we've never had complaints back there. And we did get back there, find the highway guys, got in there and shoveled it by hand, shoveled the trough out all the way back. It's right by Mike Maddenway's house, all the way back to the woods. And the hand dugs, we don't have, you know, it's hard to get in there. They hand dug some ditches and got that opened up. That, that worked very well. The, we rented the Trumble. All our, a lot of our mulch that we weren't able to get rid of, been sitting down there for 10 years. And we dug, we did this 10 years ago and we had mulch for all that time, or we had topsoil for all that time. This year, we spent a thousand dollars on topsoil. So we rented that machine, finally got it in here, and we have topsoil now for another 10 years. It's really good stuff. That worked out, that worked out very well, so. The Can Street project, we're hoping that that's going to go out to bid here soon. We did get, we did get a hundred thousand dollar grant for electrical. There's a 90,000 dollar grant for the fluoride and what have you. We got a conditional okay on that. We have a little more paperwork to do next week. We're hoping that's going to be approved. And that should be, next week, that should be submitted and we should have an answer on that. Other than that, must there's questions? We're good.
Moving on to the codes. Who wants some mic? I'll stick with the agenda.
Thank you. I, I do have a couple items to, to bring up. We, we did have yesterday a busy day. We had a vehicle that someone went into that was unlocked over in the apartments and a set of golf clubs were stolen. And then from there, the individuals used the golf clubs to break some windows. The vehicle's parked at Legacy Drive, which were locked. We generally don't have that type of issue. Fortunately, one of our officers went up there and had to see two people sitting in a vehicle. And it turned out the vehicle was stolen out of Oneida. People were out of the city of Syracuse. We made some arrests in that incident and then later in the day, I've had some of you ask me, we ended at a vehicle diner. Employee there was asked to leave, played and wanted to leave. Some of the other employees got up to him, confronted him. Employee that was asked to leave pulled out a knife and chase went on inside the restaurant there. Our officers went over there and ended up subduing the subject with a knife and taking him into custody and bringing him back. I got there just as they'd taken him into custody. So that did generate some, some interest around the community because something like that generally doesn't happen there. So it's been kind of busy and we are, as I mentioned, in our public safety committee facing some, some serious staffing issues with some, some officers that are out. But we'll, we'll work around that the best we can. Other than that, I will stick with the agenda. There are two items on the agenda. The appointment of Marty and Jim Serenkowski, the special patrol officers, Marty Noll and Jim Serenkowski. We're going to add two positions to our school resource officer cadre. At the elementary level, the sheriff's will take the three outside the village. I think that'll be a nice addition. So every school in the Baldensville School District will have a law enforcement presence added for this year. And I'm sure a contract will be forthcoming. We'll probably start the year without one. I've spoken with school administration and we've done that in the past with the SROs. I think we've got a good framework for what we're looking to do and what's going to be the cost. But time being as it is and their board and our board meeting, it will probably be sometime in September before an actual formalized contract is in place. But I think the framework is, is good. Bob's been great to work with. We're going to hash out some more things and that's where we are. Must there's questions? Appreciate it.
I don't know if the folks, I don't know how the camera's affecting this, that we are now using mood lighting for the board.
Very nice.
Commas down.
Very, very nice. A nice thought.
Is it? We'll see if I can read the motion. Moving on to pending business, item A. Discussion regarding the proposed local law change from R1 to R2 for Phillips Street. As the mayor stated, we're, we don't have the information yet from the planning board to go anywhere with this, so we remain pending till the next week or maybe the meeting after.
Right. There were a couple items that came on the SOCUP evaluation of the project. And one of the things that was on it was quite surprising to me. It said, given the potential of a large solar array that is installed on an adjacent parcel, parcel to the north, they're encouraged having a landscape buffer. It's not in the village, but I wasn't aware that they were doing something right there so close to what we're discussing. There were, there were some other very issues. They, they thought that instead of having a street come out between houses on Oneida Street, that they should connect with Candlewood Gardens and have that be the thoroughfare to get back to the old apartments. I'm not sure how Candlewood Gardens would enjoy that. Several other things that they suggested. They're suggesting that the driveway be public streets instead of private so that the village would take care of it. I think, I thought that was one of the pluses that they said to us was you won't, we'll take care of the snowfall and that type of stuff. So there's a lot of stuff for the planning board to look at and talk with the developers and then formulate an opinion to give to us. So we're on hold in doing our due diligence. And at the same time, the planning board is also considering a project over here by State Mary's Apartments. So they may look and see that probably there's not room in the village for two of them. And they may make an evaluation on which one they think is a stronger project. So we're on hold, Bruce said.
I do have one thing to say. Do I need to go to the mic?
Yeah, you guess. I'm sorry, Sally, you got to come up and introduce yourself.
Got to sign in.
I did. Sally and Mechanic Street, but the, the solar project, it's a solar array and it butts right up to the property line of the proposed Phillips Apartments. Like it's right there. And I had some questions about that, but I went to the town meeting of the present. I've been busy, but they say it's not going to impact the water. But the land says, you know, it's a designated occasional creek or something to that effect. So I, I just think it's interesting that, that all this water is, you know, connected.
I find it interesting that that land is wooded and that that's the best place to put a solar. Whatever.
Apparently it's zoned.
It would is law.
No, I guess not.
It's zoned agricultural at this point. I have questions. I ask. Go around. Anyway, back to the show.
Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, I'm going to read a motion and then like somebody to make it, maybe. It resolved that the proposed lease renewal between the Village of Baldensville and the NCWPCS MPL 22-year sites tower holdings, an LLC of Delaware Limited Liability Company, providing for renewal of the existing lease for the cell tower at 2848 Belgium Road, Baldensville, New York, initially commencing September 1st, 1993 and expiring August 31st, 2023, is thereafter extended to provide for four additional extensions of five years each to be automatically enacted with existing rent to be increased at an annual rate of 3% commencing September 1st, 2022, with signing bonus to be paid within 30 days of execution of the renewal amendment. Is hereby approved and the mayor of the Village of Baldensville is hereby authorized to execute the fourth amendment to the existing lease agreement and any other documents relating to the lease amendment.
I could make that motion. I can't repeat it, but I'll make it.
Can I have a second? Can I ask a question to the attorney?
Yes.
It mentions this signing bonus, but it doesn't have a, a number?
4,500.
Okay. Gee, baseball players get a lot more than that. Any other discussion? Everybody know where this is? No discussion?
Where is it?
2848 Belgium Road.
By the way, right?
Yeah.
I was just teasing.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no nays, the motion is carried. What's next? Item B, motion appointing Martin T. Noll as a police officer part-time at a pay rate of 28,000 per hour effective August 27th, 2022.
I'll make one shoot.
I'll cycle it.
I'd like to just comment that it's kind of neat to see Marty coming back from my perspective.
Well, good for us.
Yeah, no, this is very good for the village.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And item C, motion appointing Marty, Martin T. Noll and James S. Serenkowski as special patrol officers at a pay rate of $35 per hour effective on August 28th, 2022. Could I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion, Mike, that you want to?
No, no.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. And item D, motion authorizing the mayor to sign the landlord authorization forms for various vendors for the Taste of Baldensville on September 17th, 2022.
Moved.
Second?
Under discussion. Can I ask what this is?
It's for the liquor authority, for New York State to the liquor authority.
We're giving them permission to serve alcohol on our property.
Okay.
It'd be a bad turnout if we don't do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I don't believe we have any executive sessions, so could I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Make a motion.
They did it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion in the meeting at 8:33 PM? Second, if nobody else will? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.